The Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight, we have the three scheduled matters, tableed matters, and then two administrative matters at the end of the meeting. We do have proof of application as in the Webster Herald and also on the website. And we'll start with the pledge of obligation.
..................................................................
Mrs. Volan, present. Mr. Schant, to your right.
Here.
Mr. Presta.
Here.
Mr. Santola.
Here.
Mr. Accorso.
Here.
Ms. Corsi.
Here.
Mr. Otusso.
Here.
Mr. DeMarco.
Here.
Before we start the meeting, I just want to make sure that anyone who's going to speak in the seeking's meeting, there's a sign up list on the podium at the door. Please make sure that you list your name and address. And then, anyone who speaks during the public hearing will have five minutes. And then, when we close the public hearing, then the board will discuss each application. Chris, if you could please read your first application in.
First application is a two-car garage addition located in Cretin, Colorado Drive. Advocate is Thomas Endeavour-Cubson. They're requesting an area variance to allow front setback of 30 feet or 50 feet is required and side setback of 5 feet or 15 feet is required associated with the construction of approximately 618 square foot two-car garage in residential addition on a 0.47 acre parcel having SBL number 078.10-1-22 located in the R3 Single Family Residential District under Section 350-12 of the Code of the Town of Wester.
Do people have this meeting? Colorado Drive.
If you guys could come up to the podium.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening.
Could you just tell the board a little bit about your application, what you're trying to do, and the reasons for the location of the addition?
Okay. So, we would like to expand our current living space into our current garage and add a two-car garage bumped out to the front, to the east side of our property, and following behind that to the right side of our house, to the south, or to the north of our property, an addition. We'd like to do this addition. Originally, we just wanted to do the garage, but we'd like to do an in-law apartment for my mother. Not, it would be just a bedroom, not a kitchen. She'd have a handicap bathroom and access into our house.
And the reason it'll be onto the side so much is so it won't be into the center. We have Granny so close to us and kind of mess up our whole design that we're looking for to keep an open concept. So, if we get Granny behind the garage, it'd seem like a nice spot for her if we had to do it with the garage in that, that close anyway. And it's not 5 feet at the, at the front. It's only 5 feet in that one back corner.
Just any of the board, any questions or comments for the applications? The, um... The rear quarter is at 5 feet, but up towards the front of the house gets the 11.2.
Correct.
Are you just taking up your existing driveway and putting in a new one, I'm assuming, just based on where the current garage is going to put grass here?
Yes.
New landscaping or something like that, huh?
Well, we have a, we currently have just a one-car garage, so a single lane driveway, so it would be a double.
Oh, so you're going to keep that and on to the existing driveway itself to the garage?
Right, yes.
You don't have to have any sections of elevations of the addition.
No, if it's a ranch and we keep the same roofline.
Same height, same height as the ranch. Granny can't go up or down. That's why we're bringing her to the side.
Can you guys run any job work or are you putting mini splits for her?
There will be one mini split for her. And then...
Oh, okay.
And I'll be able to put the heat runs so they're where the existing garage is.
Where will the unit for the mini split sit? Instead of the back, or it's set on that side?
Uh, I can definitely put it towards the back. Yeah, towards the back and keep it off that wall.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the floor. If there's anyone here that would like to speak for or against the application, please come up to the podium, identify yourself, and then speak your, state your opinion or your thoughts on the matter. All right, seeing no one, I will return the discussion back to the board pursuant to NYCRR, Section 617 of the Environmental Code. I'll make a motion for a type 2 seeker.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone want to review the standards? Is not character with the neighborhood. There are other homes in the area that have added additions in that neighborhood. They're all fairly narrow lots, and so any, excuse me, any addition that's required is going to go into the side setback. There will not be a detriment created to nearby properties. The addition is actually adjacent to the rear yard of the next-door neighbor, so I don't believe it will be terribly visible to that neighbor. It's the least impacted location with respect to the rest of the neighbors as far as achievable from any other method in order to maintain a single story and have a successful two-year elderly parent and match the homes in the neighborhood. The single level is important, which then dictates the size of the addition, since I can't stack it up. There are no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the site or the neighborhood. I'll flip a point with the difficulty being self-created or not. The lot itself is unusually shaped in that it's wider than the front's impact shape, so it's quite narrow towards the back. And there really is very little that can be done to the house that doesn't impact the side setback on that side of the home. But you are desiring to put the addition on, so I'll call that a tie. And then, it's not an undesirable change and that it's going to match the character of the home and the roofline of the house to what it would look like at the moment there. Anything else anyone wants to add?
None of the materials and, like you said, roofline are consistent with the existing structure.
Which they will be?
We, we will re-roof our current house, so that we can match.
Okay. What do you want to move on to?
The promotion that we grant an area variance to the, uh, to the property located at Cretin, Colorado Drive. Advocate's Thomas Endeavour-Cubson for an area variance to allow a front setback of 30 feet or 50 feet is required, a side setback of 5 feet or 15 feet is required associated with the construction of a new addition and two-car garage. All in parcel located at, um... Located in R3 Single Family Residential District having SBL number 078.10-1-22 under Section 350-12 of the Code of the Town of Wester.
Second. Mr. Santola.
Aye.
Mrs. Volan.
Aye.
Mr. Santonata.
Aye.
Mr. Presta.
Aye.
Mr. Miss Garrett.
Aye.
All right, your motion passes, so you do have an area variance. You have one year meaningful construction. You must obtain all necessary permits with respect to the Town of Wester. You will have to apply by all building codes. What do you think, Josh?
If you're going to be expanding the driveway, you'll want to reach out to the highway department to get a permit for that as well.
Thank you. You have an area, so you can apply by the Town and get permits and get started.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
All right, the next matter is Mill Creek Run.
The matter of garage addition shown located at 1291 Mill Creek Run. Advocate Dan Western is requesting an area variance to allow a side setback of 10 feet or 15 feet is required associated with the construction of approximately 288 square foot addition to an existing garage on a 0.4 acre parcel having SBL number 065.13-2-45 located in the R3 Single Family Residential District under Section 350-12 of the Code of the Town of Wester.
Good evening. I'm looking to get a variance to add on to the garage, 12 feet by 24. I will carry along the roofline exactly the same. I will re-side the addition with cedar shakes that are currently on the house. I will get noise, of course. Looking to add on that 12 feet to give more space for my son and I and my daughters to increase our ability to have some fun hobbies, getting into woodworking and whatnot. And my son's really taken off of that, so I want to be able to have a little more space to work.
That's a hobby, not a, not a job?
Correct.
Do you need to go directly to the lot line or can you come off of it a little? What I'm seeing right here is it says, "Build to property lot line." So, I'm, I'm assuming that means right up to the property lot, lot line? Or are you going to have like a little space off of it?
No, it'll still be 9 feet to the property line. There's 21 feet and change right now from the building to the property line. Want to go 12 feet. So, look for a 5-foot variance into that space.
I'm assuming, right, what, boardwork? You're going to run electric, probably heat back there too?
Uh, probably just electric for now.
Do you have to upgrade your service?
No, we don't have to.
Is the driveway going to extend over to or not?
No, right now, it already speaks out that way.
Okay.
So, we're just, we're not going to modify that at all. I'm not looking to put a garage door on the front. It's just space. It's not even another point.
You're just expanding that wall out, but...
Yep, yeah.
Access will be in from the existing garage, I'm assuming that?
Yeah, there's a side, there's a side passage door that comes in from the front, and then there's a door on the house as well. And a door on the back of the garage.
Any other questions from the board before we do the hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak for or against this application, you may step up to the podium now. Okay, so no one, I'll return the discussion back to the board. So, we're looking for a roughly single car addition of 12 feet by 24 with a side setback of approximately 10 feet. Pursuant to NYCRR, Section 617 of the Environmental Code, I'll make a motion for a type 2 seeker.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to go through the findings?
The addition, uh, we can construct it according to the same roofline and the same materials, so, and the fact that it would be consistent with other houses in the area will not create any sort of change in the essential character of the neighborhood. Based on the lot itself, there doesn't appear to be any remedy other than where it's located to bump out usable garage space. The variance is not significant based on the current layout of the house, the building, and the land. The core area variance is not substantial. There's still 10 feet of space retained between the proposed addition and the property line. And, um, the, there are no detrimental impacts on the environment or the environment or condition of the neighborhood. And although it is self-created by the request, the existing property lines were there, and there is no other, um, buildable option that will allow them to create space in it.
Does anyone want to add to that? With that, I'll make a motion to grant an area variance to allow a garage addition for 1291 Mill Creek Run. Advocate is requesting a 10-foot side setback or 15 feet is required for the construction of an approximately 288 square foot addition on a .4 acre parcel with SBL 065.13-2-45 located in an R3 Single Family Residential District.
Second.
Mrs. Volan.
Aye.
Mr. Santola.
Aye.
Mr. Restada.
Aye.
Mr. Presta.
Mr. Santonata.
Aye.
All right, you do have your area variances. There are some conditions. You have one year to start meaningful construction with your various desires. You can obtain all necessary governmental permits. And, um, that's really it. You can have the Town and get happy with your variance and get permits to get started.
Thank you.
Did we do a seeker on this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, okay. Just double check.
All right, um... The next application is 747 Herman Road.
The next matter is maintained chickens located at 747 Herman Road. Advocate Mary Zimbel is requesting a special use permit to allow no more than eight chickens on a 0.60 acre parcel. SBL number 064.01-2-12 located in the R2 Single Family Residential District under Section 350-40, Section 350-72A, and Section 350-75 of the Code of the Town of Wester.
Hello?
Good evening.
We'll start again.
Explain to the board by your perjury what we're trying to accomplish.
Yes. I am here requesting a special use permit to maintain my chickens at 747 Herman Road. I have seven girls at this time. I do not have any roosters. My girls are for eggs and companionship as well as for the lessons and stewardship for my daughter who's five years old. They are quiet at most. You will hear them sing their egg laying song. At the risk of embarrassing myself at a public forum, I will not sing it for you, but when you hear them going, it's because they've either laid an egg or they're about to lay an egg and they would like to tell the entire world. My, um, my neighbors right next door to me have described them as very sweet and totally harmless. They have more than enough space within their coop as well as within their enclosed run. I know that I already mentioned that I have them for their eggs, but I would like to emphasize that I do not have them for meat. They all have their own names. We are very much pets. Let's see, what else can I tell you? The coop is right next to my house. So, oh, thank you. I didn't think to look up there. So, it's roughly the same color. It's right next to my house. I keep it there because there's this really nifty nook, if you will, from the back of my home that helps to weatherproof the area. With the wind that we get, this helps to keep them warmer and protected from that. It's also out of sight, and for a long time, there was nothing but woods between myself and my neighbors on that side. The run, you can't really see it, which is, is kind of the point. The run is topped with bird netting. You can kind of see it in that right-hand photo there. And it's also fenced in. The bottom part is also fenced in with chicken wire along the fence itself. What more can I tell you from there? Um, the, oh, right, yes. So, the neighborhood boasts a farm and agricultural character all around, all of them down Herman Road, Pellet Road, Van Alstine, Drum, Shoemaker, it goes on. It's very farmy. In fact, the homes, we'll say stage left, of mine, three of them have chickens right next door, and they have five or six really sweet, really cuddly chickens. Next door to them, there's an entire barn of livestock, chickens, geese, some roosters and some sweet sheep. Next to them, there are more, there's more poultry. And then, of course, there's the entire neighborhood flock of turkey that roam about for several months out of the year, every year. So, I believe that with all of that, my, my chickens fit right in with the, with the neighborhood.
You're not going to put any kind of roof on top of it?
On top of what?
On top of where your fence lines is, well?
There is a, so there's bird netting on there at this time, which is a little hard to see, but that's kind of the point. If you walked up to it, it's, so it's all black. But if you walked up to it, you could see it and even touch it. In truth, in hopes of not complicating things more, I would like to build them a new coop this summer, and I would like to have an enclosed run for it. But I haven't, I haven't figured out plans for that quite yet. I wanted to see how this meeting goes, of course. But it is covered right now.
You say there's other people in the area that have chickens and other farm animals. How big are their lot sizes compared to yours?
Thank you for asking. So, yes, they do have 5 acres next door to me as well as the, or at least 5 acres, I should say, as well as the properties next to them. I realize that I have a smaller property, and please forgive me. Thank you for correcting it. In my application, I wrote .65. That was an oversight on my part. It is .6, as you guys corrected in the postcards. So, I realize that I have a smaller property. I do realize that the neighbors do have 5 acres or more. I'm also, um, sorry, very close to the microphone. I'm also aware that I have more than enough space to keep healthy, safe, well-care for chickens. My chickens are not posing any trouble or nuisance, and they, they do fit in with the neighborhood character. So, I hope that I can get a special use permit that will help me keep them in my smaller lot.
I want to piggyback on one more thing. Do you, because you have a small lot and they all have 5 acres, which means town code, do you think it would be, if, let's say you did get this approved and everything, do you think it's right that everybody should have the same thing if they have a smaller, let's say even a smaller lot than you did, put this up? Do you think we do anything to the whole town?
I'm sorry, can you, I, my left just a little blocked.
No, sorry, okay. What I'm saying is, you have a small lot, like you said. The other ones have a 5-acre lot, so they can have a more room. So, do you think a house that sits on .04 acres should also be approved if you get approved for the way the town looks?
Um, I imagine that that depends on the area, and that's really, I'm sorry.
I don't know, respectfully, that's an appropriate question.
No, that's fine, I didn't know. So, it's just kind of curious.
Yeah, yeah.
I was going to send it back to you and say that I don't know that I would be qualified to do that, but I...
I'm a little in that area.
We're going to, we're going to strike that question.
That's fine, you can strike it, it's not a bad idea.
Okay.
Josh, you have a question. So, if she does get approval tonight and wants to build a new coop, should we have to go through a go process?
Or depending on the nature of the construction, I don't, I have enough details to know.
No, no, just, just that getting her a special use permit does not need to be approved necessarily.
Yeah, I mean, if she were to...
Just rebuild what she has.
Right, we would, we would only require a building permit if it's in fact a permanent structure affixed to the ground and meets the definition of a building. I, my initial inclination is that this would not require a building permit in a new coop.
Okay. I'm just trying to, if you get approval, help you pave the way for doing what these...
Thank you, I appreciate that.
If there's no other comments from the board, I will open this up to the public. If there's anyone who has issues to speak for against this application, if you could please approach the podium, identify your name and address, and then state whatever your comments are, please. All right, so no one, I'll return the discussion back to the board. Before we continue as part of the public comment, we do have several letters of support from neighbors surrounding the area. We have a letter from Benjamin Wasniewski, and he is at 756 Herman Road. Brian Christine Ferry of 745 Herman Road also in favor. William Borback, Borback of 748 Herman Road is also in favor. Joseph Borback of 744 Herman Road and Carol Gabberts and... The address is not listed over there. She does live under that road.
She's right next to Linda Herman's, who should also be in there as well.
All right. I might have missed a page, but also then Linda Herman as well to the states. She's in, they're all in favor. Seeker? Pursuant to NYCRR, Section 617 of the Environmental Code, I'll make a motion for a type 2 seeker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, switching to most of the board members. We have done an application on drawdown within the past year for, I believe, eight chickens on a .5 or .6 acre parcel. .6 acres. We also had a similar special use permit on Maple Drive, and I believe they have the ability to keep up to 12 chickens, no roosters on either of those occasions, on a 1.9 acre parcel. Then again, we also have three houses, the next three addresses also in the area, so... Just make note of that from the previous board activity.
Since you only have seven houses, and if you're leaving at a date, would you ever consider getting a rooster or are you okay with that?
I will not have a rooster. I have a five-year-old daughter. I don't want to run that risk. They're also right beneath my bedroom, and I would not like to be waiting to find them.
So, are roosters aggressive, then?
Um, they don't have to be, but they can be. Interestingly, they're not aggressive at all in Hawaii, but they can be here. Maybe it's winter, I don't know why. Maybe it's winter, I don't know why.
Alright, any other comments or questions?
Josh, do we have, I may be confusing this with, I'm not sure if it were pigs. Did we have some type of a, like a check-in?
Yes.
The code allows the board to impose a condition that the applicant appeared back before them at a certain period of time up to the board's discretion to get a report from our code enforcement officer just to ensure that it's not creating any issues. And then the board has the ability to extend the permit up to a total of five years based on that. That's typically how they handle it.
Oh, thank you. Is that fair, so I'm a folk, please? Alright, Mr. Attorney, Mr. Mark, do we, do we matter with this criteria or just look? Item, item?
Well, yeah, I guess what we're going to, would have to be the person that makes the motion to some machine at those five minutes.
Okay, alright. Alright, we're just going to start reading through these and we can discuss each one as we go.
That's fine. There are a total of 12, so there is another slide that has additional criteria. So I want to make some motion, just want to be clear on that.
Okay. Alright, but I believe we could use these as findings as we're discussing them. Alright, the first one is the use will not prevent the orderly or reasonable use of adjacent properties or of properties in adjacent use districts. I will say that the chickens have been there for six years.
Correct.
Five to six years. When I visited the property, other than seeing one sitting quietly on the other side of the fence, I would not have known that the chickens there. So I guess I would say that this would meet that criteria. The public health, safety, general welfare, court order of the town will not be adversely affected by the proposed use in exhumation. Again, I don't want to dominate the conversation, but I would agree with that in this instance. The use will be in general harmony with and promote the general purposes and intent of the most recent comprehensive plan of the code of the town and ordinance for chapter 350. That section of town, I believe, is part of the large lot district for what little land is left. And the large lot district, when it was instituted within the town was to promote, I won't say necessarily farm-like activities, but larger, more spacious, more countryside types of activities and types of living. And within that neighborhood of Herman and Drum, if I go over to Van Alstine into Wyden and Shoemaker, does kind of all fit this character. The proposed use will not interfere with the preservation of the general character of the neighborhood in which such building is to be placed or uses to be conducted and in fact be compatible with its surroundings and with the character of the neighborhood or the community in general, particularly with regard to visibility, scale, and overall appearance. Would say we need that as well. The physical characteristics and topography of the proposed site make it suitable for the proposed special use. Anyone have any comments on that? To me, the location is logical because it is in the window, but and it's, there's a wooded area that's to the east of it. They can basically use to the direction.
To the left.
The physical characteristics are, the proposed special use provides appropriate landscaping and/or forms of buffering to protect the surrounding land uses. The applicant does give a fence around the area, around the entire yard, rear yard, as well as the actual chicken coop area is fenced in. So I would say that we also need that criteria as well. Thank you. The property is sufficiently appropriate, adequate area for the use as well as reasonably anticipated operation thereof. I would say as long as the size of the flock is limited to eight at this point in time, they've been there, it appears to be sufficient in that they've lived there, I guess I'll say discreetly, for several years. The access to facilities is adequate for the estimated traffic. It's not worth to generate any additional traffic. It's just strictly a resident using this for her own family. The rest of it is, alright, okay.
Yeah, it might be electricity.
Sorry. I redact that.
Alright, the 28 is going to make a motion. Any other comments?
Do you have any conditions, preface of anything?
Alright, I would I would make a motion that this board grants a special use permit to allow the keeping of chickens at 747 Herman Road for the applicant Mary Zindel. The flock, I would say, will consist of no more than eight chickens as it's on .6 acre parcel. The chickens will remain contained so that they're not impactful to the surrounding neighbors as best they can be. I don't know if chickens on occasion run away or not. The, the permit will not allow a rooster at the location. It will only be for chickens. And
Sir, the applicant who appeared for the board.
And yes, I would say that this would be a six-month follow-up if the board does determine to grant this. And at some point in time, towards the end of this six months, we would expect the code enforcement officer to evaluate the use for us and bring it back to the board to discuss allowing the use to continue or or make the modifications as required based on these findings. Okay, so this is all at 747 Herman Road. It is parcel number 064.01-2-12 and it is in an R2 single-family residential district.
You got inside, you got lumber, no, no roosters and we do, we have here a lot of wood.
Is it yours?
Yeah, if we didn't miss something, we had, we had a six-month.
Alright, we have a second. Thank you. Mrs. Vala.
Aye.
Mr. Santola.
Aye.
Mr. Garrett.
Aye.
Mr. Prescott.
Aye.
Mr. Fankinoff.
Aye.
Alright, you do have your special use permit and the town will I have to, Josh, I don't know, like do you, can you send a, send a permit letter to the applicant and then in six months, a nickel period before the board again, just as a review?
Yes, we will send out an official approval letter with the conditions and we will notify code enforcement to put this on their calendar for six months.
Okay, and will you also notify the applicant six months later back in the region?
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for bearing this. Alright, we do have another administrative matter at this point. Well, alright, so that closes out the formal business of the, of the zoning work for April. We do have two administrative matters. The first administrative matter is the one-year review at 877 Maple Drive for special use permit number 23-CD-0008 for the construction of a chicken coop. The property was granted an increase from six to 12 chickens in April of 2024 and this is the one-year review of that, so would you please come up? And then. Hi.
Hello.
State your name, please.
Nicholas Serini.
And your address is 877 Maple Drive. Now, code enforcement, we do have a letter from Mr. Santiago, the code compliance officer. They, to date, has received no complaints with respect regarding the chickens at 877 Maple Drive, which were granted a special use permit by this board. Please accept this report as my favorable recommendation for the resident to maintain the special use permit for the remainder of the five-year period. And it says up until March. So, does anyone from the board have any comments or questions before we proceed? Alright, and then.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Justice, the, is it required to notice the one-year status report?
Not to know.
Is it noticed?
It was listed under administrative matters, but it was.
It wasn't.
It was part of the.
Yes, alright. Now, if we extend this, is it five years from the, from 2024? Or is it five years from tonight? We can say.
It's been five years.
Okay, so then five years, so four more years. Okay. Does anyone want to do a motion?
How? Make a motion that we accept the review letter of the code compliance officer saying that there have been no complaints regarding the chicken kept at 877 Maple Drive and allow them to continue their, there's their increase of chickens from six to 12 until April of 2020, which would be four years from the initial date of the court.
Five, five years from the initial date, so 2029, four years from now. Four, eight, nine. Correct, yes. Second. Mr. Santola.
Aye.
Mrs. Vala.
Aye.
Mr. Fankinoff.
Aye.
Mr. Prescott.
Aye.
Mr. Garrett.
Aye.
Your permit is extended for the remaining four years. And this is my question for the attorney. At the end of that four-year window, or Josh, the applicant, in order to maintain the flock, would need to start the approval process to apply for a new special permit?
Assuming we have the same code in place at that time.
Unless there are improvements to, changes to the code that.
Well, regardless, it will expire.
Yes, so something will need to be recognized or acknowledged. Alright.
I have two things. Just wondering if I were to place a stand at the end of my driveway for eggs or honey, would I need to, so you can, permit to do for that or?
Birds, do you use October limit for them?
Yes, they're seasonally permitted and there is some criteria, proximity to the roadway, having off-street parking available. So we do, in certain circumstances, if you meet the criteria, it is allowed.
Okay, is that criteria in the code book or?
Yeah, I'd be happy to take a look at it and do back with you.
Okay. Alright, good, thank you. The other matter, just notes for the previous, I know when I got my original special use permit, I didn't require a building permit as well. Asking about that, so it's.
For the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it, is it built on a foundation or is it essentially removable, affixed to the ground permanently?
It would take some work, but it is, yes, there's no foundation.
So therefore it would be exempt under the New York State Building Code.
Okay.
As long as humans aren't habitating in there, then they would be.
Alright, thank you.
Very pleasant.
Thank you. Alright, the other two clues. Those nails, and then we have final administrative matter is the approval of the minutes from the March 11 meeting. So. I would make a motion to approve the March 11, 2025 meeting minutes.
Yes, sir.
Almost in favor.
Aye.
Proposed. So approved and with that concludes this evening's meeting and thanks a lot for coming.